Should be good to start whenever you're ready, your worship.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of council. Tuesday, November the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at four forty P M. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda.
A motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff seconded by Rick Owen. It is that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at four forty P M. Be approved as circulated to all members of council with the addition of item four point one, a delegation from K L Solar.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations. Four point one. Paul Nado from K L Solar.
Can everybody hear me good?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, Mayor Council, for having me here tonight to give you a pretty much a two thousand twenty-one year in review for K L Solar. Overall, I'm going to go over a number of details. If you want me to dig deeper into numbers and that, just go ahead and ask the questions, but I'll give you a high level overview and you can ask questions as we go. So overall, two thousand twenty-one was an average year in terms of solar radiance. Basically, it means the sun was pretty much shining an average amount versus other comparative years. Our overall generation or revenue is down this year for a few reasons. Number one, and the biggest reason was due to mechanical breakdown. We had some issues back in the freeze thaw cycles earlier this year in February and early March. Were during the freeze thaw cycle, limit switches would freeze. Limit switches are the switches that are preventing the trackers from overturning when they track from their east to west limits. So we had issues where ice would build up on those limit switches and now as they would strike the stop plate, there's still plate which called the end stop, the limit switches would not activate due to being frozen and they would drive through those end stops and keep rotating until they pretty much pull the wires right out of the trackers, out of the two of the trackers. So we had that issue happen in early, late February, early March. We immediately contacted the manufacturer because we deemed it as being a defect in the way that it was the design. So we contacted the manufacturer and the manufacturer agree with us that yes, a better, I guess, a better plan could have put be put in place in order to prevent water from dripping on those end stops. So they worked with us, they sent us a few different models to try out and we ultimately decided on a model where the end stops would sit underneath the slew drive and be covered by a shroud. So once that was approved, they went back and ordered all the parts for for the repairs, all limit switches for all the three sites to be switched over a hundred percent. Unfortunately, due to COVID, there were some mass worries in terms of getting those in and we didn't receive all those parts until end of August, early September. So we started repairing those in September and this year or a few months ago. And we finally finished the last site or finish what we could do this year. Last week, there will be some work left to be done on K L two. K L two is the site where there's the aggressive terrain going up the hill on the south side of Archer Drive. So that'll have to be done once the ground freezes up because we're having issues getting equipment up and down that site to perform repairs. Overall, the manufacturer warranted all the parts, so they provided the parts for your cost. But we had to pay the labor portion. These sites are out of warranty, so we still found that pretty good from them. Overall, I think it was a hundred and thirty some thousand dollars worth of parts and there's about thirty thousand dollars worth of labor that we have to spend to get those switched over. So what that did, that what that major issue did for us is it sat most of the sites or I'd say about seventy percent on K L one, forty percent on K L two and about fifty, sixty percent on K L three had to sit idle, not tracking from March to until they were put back online in the last couple of weeks. And then we lost about twenty percent production versus regular targets or versus last year due to the trackers not tracking east and west. So that was the major issue that happened this year. In terms of what what that that revenue figure looks like in the last quarter, so the year, the quarter ending September thirty first or September thirtieth, sorry. We had total revenue generation of two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. The the portion of that that went to long term debt was a hundred twenty thousand, forty thousand dollars a month and we had excess revenue ninety-seven thousand over that in Q two, which is the first quarter, which was affected by this by this issue. We had a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of production, a hundred twenty thousand dollars of debt, so eighteen thousand dollars excess production, excess revenue over debt. So overall, since the beginning of the project, we are still sitting on the positive side in terms of debt service coverage. So we have generated nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in revenue, or sorry, it is or one point two four five million dollars in revenue of that, two nine hundred and sixty-four thousand went to service debt and we are still sitting with the in excess revenue of two hundred eighty-one thousand zero sixty-eight fifty-two cents. That's the excess revenue over debt. In our bank accounts, we are currently sitting at four hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. In that account, we do maintain a reserve, which is six months reserve for payments of forty thousand dollars a month, approximately forty thousand dollars a month, which is two hundred and forty thousand dollars that we have to maintain as a reserve. The rest is free cash flow for us to operate and and spend as we see fit. We just approved the two thousand twenty financials. The auditors were late in providing, the financial received them in, I think, late September. So we had a board meeting today and approved the financial for two thousand twenty. I'm not sure if if this has been provided to council or not, Mayor Kyle.
No, they haven't. We just got them.
Okay, so I could provide maybe a council package for reviews for information item later on with the financials and all the generation data that I just provided to you.
Yes, please.
Okay, that's about it in terms of what two thousand twenty-one was. I'm not sure if there's any specific questions from council regarding the operation of projects I could answer.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, good afternoon, Paul Nado, and thank you very much for joining us today. The question that I have has to do with how much revenue stream is coming to the municipality out of all of this. I know you indicated you have a four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars reserve now. And this, I'm sorry, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the bank and portion of that is going to a reserve. How much has been allocated to the municipality of ours to help us out? Are we getting any of and how much have we been receiving since the inception of this project?
So the municipalities, we haven't issued any dividends to any municipalities or shareholders to date. And we actually had the discussion at the board meeting this afternoon. We will be reviewing due to two thousand twenty-one and the special circumstances, we will be reviewing the the available cash flow for dividend in January next year, once two thousand twenty-one closes off. And we dedicated a board meeting just for that discussion and see what portion we could issue to municipality or to shareholders in terms of dividends. But to date, nothing has been sent.
Nothing has been sent, okay. Which is a which is a problem for me. I wasn't around when this project started. But my understanding was that this is something that will help the bottom line of the municipality from the get-go. I mean, I but I do understand that you have expenses to cover. But at the same time, the municipality should be really ripping the dividends by now in my view, so that that could help us out with our, you know, infrastructure expenses. So I'm not too sure who's sitting on that board from municipality. But I think that since we have taxpayers' money tied down into this, I just wanna we start to get revenue coming in from this, the better it is because as you know yourself, this is an aging system that you have there now. So I believe that the expenses to to keep it going would be escalating, you know, as it gets older and older. So which means that we may not be getting much of anything at all if we're not getting anything right now. The other question that I have for you, Mr. Nado, is that my understanding is that life is the lifespan of this whole thing is twenty years. Unless there is a new technology that may extend that life span. So what, when do you see, when do you see us? Shall we say decommissioned this if it comes to that? And then is there money put aside for that to happen? If you have to decommission this in future, I know if you have an environmental site that comes to a point whereby if you have to decommission it, then you have to, you know, I do that. So I don't think we need to decommission this by looking ahead down the road. We have to decommission this. I you're corporations setting money aside to do that, or are we setting money aside for a new technology that may enhance the life of this solar system that we have in Kirkland Lake? I'm sorry that my question are very.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So just to answer the first question or the first comment you made in regards to the twenty-year life of the the asset. It's not necessarily twenty-year life of the asset itself. It's twenty-year contract with the I E S O to get paid for money for energy and generation. So the asset has a useful life of more than twenty years. We just amortize it over twenty years, so that's the value of the contract or that's the duration of the contract. So we could easily see these these modules, which are warranted for twenty-five years, extend past that contract for five years still under warranty at a certain linear degradation in terms of production. So that being said, the end of life value is, I think, very, very good because we will have an asset that's paid off, that's capable of generating probably still about four hundred kilowatts of energy that could be redirected through a microgrid directly in your industrial park. So that Archer Drive is your industrial development. So there's plenty of potential in terms of consumers that we could offload that that electricity to. So there is, there is potential end of life. Now, to address your question regarding money being put aside, no, there is no money being put aside because we anticipate it having a very useful or positive value at the end of the contract, twenty-year contract from the government.
Okay, I think I'm gonna wait till we get the the financial statement because I mean taxpayers' money are involved in this, so we should be making everything very transparent to the taxpayers so that they know what's happening to this big project down at Archer Drive. So I'm gonna wait till we get some of the numbers. Will you be willing to commit to come back to the council later on down the road if we have any more questions after reviewing the information?
Absolutely, absolutely. One comment before before I move on to the next question here. Please note that there is no taxpayers' money involved from Kirkland Lake at all. Hundred percent of these sites were developed by Cap Energy. The money was put in there by Cap Energy and no money was expensed by the town of Kirkland Lake in these projects.
But in lieu of that, in lieu of that, the land was the land in lieu of a cash payment, then they have the land that the whole thing is sitting on and all of that come from Kirkland Lake, the town of Kirkland Lake.
It does, but we do pay taxes on it. So we paid fifteen thousand dollars in taxes last year on the land.
Thank you.
So the municipality is not profiting, but there is, it is generating revenue from the tax base of those sold their assets. I hope I answered all your questions.
Well, yes, you have. Yes, you have. Yeah, I'm done. Yeah, carry on your worship. That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Nado.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I think Paul, in our discussions this afternoon at the board meeting, we will hopefully in January be able to put a positive spin on this, where we're going to be able to get some money back. It's been an unusual year, as you said. The project is fairly close to what the consultants predicted on the on the cash flow. So hopefully we move ahead and there aren't any interruptions, like I think you had mentioned this afternoon when we met that these were unusual circumstances and we probably have unless something very strange comes up, we should be going full steam as normal.
Yes, correct. The I don't foresee any other issues that that could come up in a day-to-day normal operation. Again, this was our first full four seasons of operation. So I think we've we've eliminated the regular environmental factors such as the freeze thaw cycle and we had in the first year with the snow accumulating on the charging panels that were charging batteries. So I think this is, this is, those issues have been addressed. Now it's just normal operation and operation maintenance to make sure these sites keep ticking for the next eighteen years.
Okay. If we have no other questions from council? None noted. We have motion to receive this report.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. It is all that the delegation from Paul Nado from K L Solar be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations. Point, go ahead.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. It resolved that the that council approved the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the special meeting of council held November first, two thousand twenty-one, and minutes of the regular meeting of council held November second, two thousand twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six, reports of municipal officers and communications of municipal election two thousand twenty-two. Megan Elliott.
Thank you, worship through you to council. Last meeting, I presented you with an election report outlining the different ways that we can hold an election and a little bit of background from previous years and some information of possibly moving to shifting to the internet and telephone voting if that is desirable. Council at that point directed staff to engage the community to see their thoughts on it. So it was a quick turnaround, but we did have a survey put out to the community and we did get a few responses from that. So it was only posted for about a little bit, I think it was six days, so it wasn't too long of a time, but hopefully yourselves were able to chat with people as well and gauge their interest. So the results based on if we should do ballots or internet was almost fifty-fifty. It's a little bit higher saying yeah, yes to the internet and phone. But some of the comments we did receive back. Of course, people, the first thing that they always think about is the security of it. But from my experience in the past, these companies have very high security for this information. So it's, they can speak to that as well if that is something that we want to engage. The age groups from the results were mainly people aged thirty-seven years and older. And we had forty-three surveys completed in total. So at this time, I didn't recommend one way or the other on my initial report. I was recommending the internet telephone voting. But I'm, I'm happy to go either way. I would just like to hear council's thoughts and would be happy to know what our next steps are.
Counselor Owen.
You're muted.
Wait, you're muted.
Because the survey was done online, there's a major bias in the results. Because people that don't use computers are not going to answer an online survey. And I'm not being critical of the way we did. That's the way council actually do it. That's fine. So taking that into consideration. I'm certainly in favor of sticking with using a tabulator. It's worked well for us in the past. I have some reservations about on my voting and I read the report. You get a PIN number and everything else, but I could go around all my neighbors and get their PIN numbers and sit there and vote five times if I wanted to, and there's no way that any security measures is going to catch that. If I walk into a tabulating into a voting poll and I'm asked for I D and my name's crossed out and I show I D, prove who I am, my name's crossed off the list. That's the only vote I'm gonna get. So I have some concerns about online voting myself, but I don't think the system we're using is broken and I don't think it needs fixed. Thank you.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, thank you very much for worship. My my concerns are a little bit different from Rick's. When I look at this, the survey even goes online. We got only forty-three. You know, I'm not a student of statistics, but that's the very, that's a very weak response. I'm not, you go, you have it for six days and it's online. I thought we guessed something like at least a hundred or more than that. So I'm uncomfortable with running with this result because forty-three people out of a population of eight thousand. So I don't know how how much you could do to reach more people. But but online, I thought it would be more than that. And number two is, you know, some of our senior citizens that are in T P R, standing care or whatnot. I'm not too sure how this online thing will be very convenient for them if you go that route. So that's all I have in terms of concerns.
Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, Megan, is it possible to do kind of a hybrid of both? Or is that too expensive? I know that we had talked about it before, but is it possible to have online voting and tabu and a tabulator and, for example, the Legion?
So council can choose to do a hybrid if they wish, but there would it would be a higher cost. It would be the same cost of what it would be for the tabulator and the same cost for the internet way put together as well as the procedures you would need. It's basically just two elections in one, so it is a lot of work and money as well, but it can be done.
But it's double the price. Is that what you're saying?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Okay.
And your worship, if you wouldn't mind, I'll jump in just to answer towards Counselor Owen and Counselor Shaba. We did offer paper copies at all of our facilities, so there was only nine that were paper, but that was an option for some people as well as the security measures with if you're using somebody else's PIN. So voting under else's, somebody else's name is illegal, so you can be charged for that as well as the companies can trace where the I P addresses are that people voted from. So they can trigger something if they see there's nine votes from the same household and then they look into that with the police, so.
Counselor White.
So my only concern was that in previous years, our election costs were about fifteen thousand dollars reportedly. And then the ballpark figure we got was was almost double that amount. So for internet voting, I usually I'm all for technology and moving forward. But I don't know if our municipality is ready to move. We don't have, do we even have the infrastructure that we require to do this thing where as the tabulators are kind of tried, true and trusted over the last few elections. And so not only do our staff know what they're doing with the tabulators, but also people in the community that have worked for us also are familiar with that system. So that would be more my lines of concerns that we already have a system in place where people are comfortable with. And the new system is brand new and so we wouldn't have the supports in place. And and as we all know, staff are struggling in areas currently. And I just don't want to add anything more to their plates at this time.
I tend to go along with what Counselor White is saying. If it's not broken, why fix it? It is working. There is some demand and for online voting. It could possibly bring people, get more people to vote. I don't know what outworked in the community that you were in, Megan, perhaps you can just as a comparison, just for curiosity, was there much increase in the in the voting turnout having online?
Yeah, so through your worship to council, where I previously worked was also a smaller municipality that was predominantly senior-based. And our voter turnout increased by sixteen percent. So and when you do the online way, you get all kinds of stats afterwards, so you can break it down by the ages and everything. And surprisingly enough, there a huge increase in the younger population like we thought, but all the older population did increase too. So of course, we had pushback of you know, change and maybe being afraid of not the technology. But every single person that came in asking for assistance and we walked them through, everyone said, that's it. That was easy. And so they were excited about that. Um, but I do, I do agree. I'm you know, at first, when I was looking into it, I was happy to try and like jump right in to do the internet telephone. And then when I was talking with some other staff members and looking at everything, I could go either way. So I'm happy with whichever way council decides as well as you know, this conversation, just like we were talking about, it only really had a weak turnaround of trying to speak with the public. Maybe it's something that we just start putting out there for the next election that that's what we're looking at. As well as, you know, I know we don't always like to compare ourselves, but to miss being chores is moving to doing the internet and telephone, so we could kind of see how it goes for them as well. So I'm happy that either way, Counselor White, your comment for the dollar amount from the elections, I was surprised when I pulled the two thousand eighteen report that's attached here because from my figures and speaking with Treasury, we got to being around two thousand twenty-five, so I don't know in that report why it says fifteen, so. But either way, pretty cost effective. Usually in the other places that I've been employed, you could spin the internet telephone to be a cost saving, so it does seem like for here that it might increase costs, so.
Counselor White.
And so in your experience, Megan, was there devoted staff that just did assistance for this new way? Was there like a staff onsite at all times that that was their only duty? Or was it pulling staff away from their regular daily duties?
So leading up to the election where I previously was, they my position got transitioned. I was kind of like a finance assistant and then I turned into more of the clerks department and then it was more focused on the elections. So during the voting time, it was ten days. We set up the council chambers to be like a help center. So we were set up in there, but we were still working on our normal daily stuff as well as just helping people when they walked in. So it was just kind of separate. it was just kind of separate. So that if they knew they need voting help, they just went this way. If they needed the municipal office, they just went that way. So. But just like any other time in elections, the, the normal clerk duties don't stop. It's just a added layer. So.
In view of our discussion, I would propose reading a motion to vote on with respect to using the tabulators.
So currently I have it to be received and I do have the mover as Stacy and the seconder as Eugene. So I could add to the motion to say that staff be directed to continue on with the utilizing the ballots and tabulators.
Have you expected to pass this tonight?
We can put it on the floor and see if you wish. Best if that's your feeling. It will help me for my next steps of knowing how to forward. So.
Okay, put it to the floor, Counselor.
Sorry, sorry. Before we move forward, I do agree with the mayor. However, can we add wording, Megan? To include an education portion from the clerk's office for the next election to prep the community for the transition to online and phone voting? Would that be worthy to add into this motion?
Just wrapping it out here.
Just so that we can do some forward thinking so that next council isn't, you know, eight months before the, the date thinking, oh, how are we gonna go about this? And especially for staff too, that preps you guys as well.
So possibly something like, be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash CLK dash zero two seven M entitled twenty twenty-two municipal election be received. That staff be directed to host the twenty twenty-two election with utilizing ballot and tabulators as past years. And that staff be directed to provide information to the public for future years of possibly transitioning to internet and telephone voting. Moved by Stacy, seconded by Eugene.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point two land development. Or land acknowledgement, sorry. Megan.
Thank you worship to you to council. Council passed a motion to have staff provide wording to have a land acknowledgement on our council agendas and have the wording approved by all parties. So through our research on this topic, as noted in the report, we found the indigenous community would rather not be engaged for the approval of the wording because they want it to be personalized from ourselves. So our staff has put together what we suggest to put on top of our agendas as well as our municipally owned facilities will feature signage and reception area, areas acknowledging the lands. And we were thinking that we wanted to do an information session for our staff. So currently in the recommended motion, I have it saying that will include an educational piece in the newsletter, but that possibly could be into a full-on information session for an, an audio to help explain how to, sorry, how to say the words properly. So.
Any further comments or discussion? We have a motion.
So I have moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash CLK dash zero two six M entitled land acknowledgement be received. That staff be directed to insert the following language on top of council agendas. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territories of the Anishinaabe Waki Cree and Oma Miweina Way Algonquin peoples and other indigenous peoples whose presence continues to enrich our vibrant community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and culture. We honor those teachings through our interactions today and every day hereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives through action. Thank you. And that staff be directed to include an educational piece in an upcoming weekly newsletter for staff to outline the importance of the usage of this land acknowledgement.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point three disposal of surplus unclaimed and scrap metals policy. Sean LaCarte, Director of Corporate Services. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you worship. And thank you through to the council. Yeah, so we, we have a, we have a, a policy set up for the disposal of surplus unclaimed and scrapped items. It is under corporate services because it is basically part of procurement. The procurement team plus with, you know, talk to some other, other departments as well to put this together. It is to identify the proper procedures for disposing of items declared as surplus to the needs of the municipality. Would include obsolete, replaced, worn out, too costly to maintain, no longer used or unclaimed items. And so we're just looking to bring this forward to you for your your decision on the policy.
Comment from Counselor Owen.
The problem is my grandchildren are making too much noise in the background. So I have to mute it in between. Anyways, I want to welcome Sean to the meeting and, and to the team. It's really good to have you here. And I, I read the policy. I think it's a good policy. I didn't see any major problems with it and I certainly am in favor of it. The rules, the, the, I was gonna say rules, but the, everything is laid out quite clearly. So that, you know, things are disposed of in a fair and transparent manner. So I certainly support this, this document.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. You're welcome.
Counselor White.
Absolutely. Welcome to the team. Very excited to meet you. I'm definitely a strong supporter of good policy, not only to ensure clear direction for staff, but of course that transparency for community members when they're reading our policies, they know what to expect of us. It's very well written. So thank you very much to you and your staff for all that effort. Excellent.
Any further comments? None noted. We have a motion.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash fin dash zero zero eight entitled disposal of surplus unclaimed and scrap items be received. That the disposal of surplus unclaimed and scrap items policy is hereby approved and that staff be directed to insert this policy into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point four tax billing and collection policy. Sean LaCarte, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you worship and through to the council. Yeah, so we are bringing forward a policy tonight for tax billing and collection to establish a policy for prompt, effective and efficient billing and collection of property taxes. I think over the last couple of meetings, there's been some talk about the property taxes in the area and, and looking at ways to, ways to remedy the, the arrears. And I think this policy gives a good direction to our, our staff and as well as letting the, the public and, and council know what we're gonna, what we're gonna do going forward. The it is part of the town strategic plan to develop and implement a tax collection policy. So I think this will give good direction to where our, our staff. It does lay out quite a few tools to use for the, you know, for the collection of the arrears. And I think going forward, it, it should help out and we do plan to get a plan in place to, to use this policy in the near future. I just wanted to let you know, I'm not too sure if they said in the last meeting, there, there are seven, seven properties that went through the tax sale in that are coming up for sale at the end of two thousand and twenty-one or two thousand and twenty-two in the beginning. So, so they have been using the tools and this just gives them a good idea of what is out there and what they can use.
Counselor White.
So just for clarification, what role do individual, well, not individual, council as a whole have in individual tax arrears issues?
The individual tax arrears issues are basically looked after by staff. The report you had at your last meeting, you know, and having the amounts of what's outstanding, numbers and that kind of thing, that's basically where, where you would, you know, where you'd use your expertise to, to direct staff. Basically went down to the property by property. It's more the staff that has to decide what, how they want to move forward and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your clarification.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I unmuted this time. So we're, I'm, yeah. Anyways, I'm glad to see this policy finally make it to the, to the council chamber. The other thing, I've been asked, received quite a few comments last since this came up at council about the size of the arrears and everything. I just want to remind the, the public, this is something council's very aware of, we're very concerned about. But we only have one full-time tax collector. And there's only so much she can do in, in, in her normal working hours. And a lot of this tax arrears is from years ago when there were different circumstances and I'm not being critical of the council at the time because they made a decision based on what was happening in the community. So yes, we are working on this issue. Yes, we do know how big a figure it is. But it will take time because it didn't happen overnight and it's not going to be corrected overnight. But at least now there's a clear set policy that the public can read. Clear set policy that the tax collector can follow. And again, it adds to the transparency and I just ask the rate pairs to be patient. We are working on this. Well, our staff, the town staff are working on this and councils hopefully will approve this policy, which gives them the direction to take. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash fin dash zero zero seven entitled tax billing and collection policy be received. That the tax billing and collection policy is hereby approved and that staff be directed to insert this policy into the corporate policy manual and upload it to the town's website.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point five appointment of auditors.
Oh, the report to, sorry, thank you worship through you to council. This report is to do with the appointment of auditor. Under the municipal, municipalities shall appoint a licensed auditor to conduct the annual audit. And the maximum term for the appointment is five years. The last time the process was completed was in twenty sixteen. And Ross Pope, who later merged with Grant Thornton, was appointed the auditor for the town for the fiscal years twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. As mentioned in the report, there were some challenges with the RFP process in that we received no proposals the first time we sent it out, which was unusual. We weren't expecting that. So we did issue the RFP again, but we also wanted to receive feedback from other firms to find out why they hadn't submitted. Sorry, apologize. And what we found were, at least some of them indicated that they no longer had the capacity or the staff to perform, sorry, an audit of our size. So that was a bit of an eye opener for us. But we did submit, or once again, issue the RFP and we received three proposals. Sorry, and evaluations criteria are indicated in the proposal or in the, sorry, in the report and evaluations were performed independently by evaluations were performed independently by three staff members. The results were averaged and are included in the report. And the result, results were also reviewed and discussed with the Director of Corporate Services. The highest ranking firm was firm A. We did call references and there were no concerns identified with, from the references. The firm has extensive municipal and public sector experience, past and present. And firm A is the firm recommended for council's approval and that is Baker Tilly. Presenting questions.
Counselor Owen.
Meg, you're muted again.
Lucky I was muted because my last two words wouldn't have been very, would be inappropriate for council. Yeah, I don't, unless I missed it, I don't see the cost of the three bids.
No, what we did is you'll notice on page on page, I can't, it's page fifty-four of the complete agenda.
Okay.
So you want to know all three. So the, under the financial considerations, but this year's twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five total audit fees excluding HST will be almost a hundred and forty-three thousand. The other two firms were over three hundred thousand.
Okay, sorry, I must have missed that. Well, with those numbers, I I, I have no further questions.
Sherri, that amount is figured over a five-year period, correct?
Yes, the hundred and forty-three thousand. Yes, that's for the entire five.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, thank you very much for this report. I can't find my page here, but maybe you can help me out. I, we have a page in which the firm A has a range of rates for all their services. What's that page? I was looking at that yesterday. So my question to you is because they have a lower rate, they have a higher rate, you know. I'm, I'm not too sure when with a rate, when would a lower rate kick in, when would a higher rate? You know, when would that kick in? Do you know?
So I think you're referring to the engagement letter because that had the ranges in it.
Yes.
Is if we, if the town were to engage them for services other than the
Other than beyond, yes, yeah.
Range, I'm only guessing, I would say would depend on the, the experience of the staff that they assign would be.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty-one dash fin dash zero zero six entitled appointment of auditor be received. That council hereby awards RFP dash five seven three dash twenty-one audit services to Baker Tilly S N T L L P. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to appoint Baker Tilly S N T L L P for a five-year period subject to annual review in accordance with the terms of the proposal submitted by Baker Tilly S N T L L P dated November fourth, twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Sherri. Item six point six request to purchase municipal surplus land. Fast road loan, road allowance. Jen McNamara, planning administrator.
Thank you worship. Through you to council, I do have a, a report for a request to purchase municipal surplus land for fast road allowance and three McKelvey. So back in January of twenty twenty, council did agree to sell a portion of a road allowance for boss. So back in January of twenty twenty, council did agree to sell a portion of a road allowance for boss to Mr. Grover Adams. Council directed staff to draft a bylaw to stop up and close that road allowance and offer the abutting property to the adjacent property owners. At the February fourth meeting, we passed that bylaw and the letters were sent off to the adjacent property owners. And the neighbors from one fast lane to nine fast lane submitted a request to purchase at seventy five cents per square foot. Process was delayed because of the global pandemic and they weren't able to complete their survey last year, so they were able to get it done this past summer and they're looking at proceeding with finalizing this land sale. So each, each of those four applicants that are there, the amounts have been adjusted, so it's the seventy five cents per square foot. They all do intend to use it as additional yard space and being that it was a closed off road allowance that wasn't being used by the municipality, we did feel it was okay for it to be listed as surplus. In regards to three McKelvey, we did receive a request to purchase the property for eight thousand nine hundred. The property was subject to a tax sale back in November of twenty nineteen. And there were no successful bids and the property was vested into the municipality's name with intent to sell a surplus land. There was an offer that was received and approved at the sale price of ten thousand last December, however, that applicant did withdraw his offer before the transaction finalized. So with this property, it is a half lot with a building on it that has been vacant for several years. And by sell, selling this property, there's opportunity for the building to be rehabilitated and contribute to the residential tax base. So by removing this property from our municipal inventory and collecting building permits and taxes is definitely a positive step forward. If there's any questions, I can answer them now.
Counselor White.
So this is more of a general question, Jenna. So there is a surplus land list available on the website. But I often get comments that the members of the community don't know which lots are for sale. So at one time there was some land for sale signage. Do we know if we're going to be putting any of those signs out in the new in the new year?
Okay, thank you, Counselor White, through you to council. We are looking at potentially purchasing some more of those signs over the next year and we would like to push some of that surplus land come springtime when we can get the lots available to put the signs in. So I know that we had done that in the past and that it does spark the interest of people, so we'll be looking at placing those strategically on some lands that we think would be successful for sale.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We have a motion.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash dev dash zero five five entitled request to purchase municipal surplus land, fast road allowance be received. And that staff be directed to prepare and present a bylaw to council to authorize the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale to sell the following properties. Part one, five four R six two two one to Grover Adams for eight hundred forty dollars ninety six cents. Part two, five four R six two two one to Gerald Antler for eight thirty nine sixty seven cents. Part three, five four R six two one to Suzanne Dumis for eight thirty eight forty five cents. Part four, five four R six two two one to Norman Tebow for eight sixty one seventy cents. And three McKelvey Avenue to Mubashar Hassan for eight thousand nine hundred.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point seven easement agreement over parcel, part parcel five one oh three C S T, Ms. McNaughton.
Thank you worship, through you to council, we are looking at having an easement agreement basically revamped and reestablished over this parcel of land. So back in nineteen eighty three, council did approve an easement agreement over a portion of this parcel for the purposes of installing storm sewer line, water main, and other public utilities. While we're in the preparation for the Swastika project, we reviewed this property and realized that the easement was not registered on title. And when reviewing the legal description for the property, it does describe a portion of property where this easement wouldn't fall over. So the, what we decided to do was engage with a surveyor to create the reference plan that identified just the portion of land where the easement would go over. It is a triangle, so it's not specific to this itty bitty little strip, but it is over that portion of land. And this way we would able, we'd be able to register this on title for any future owners that purchase this. So when the property owners did purchase the property, they were aware of that existing agreement. So we simply redrafted the agreement in the templates that we have now to include that proper description with the proper survey. And we did speak with the owners about this agreement and they were in favor of signing it. So we're just looking to repeal the old bylaw to establish this new one. Any questions, I can answer them now.
Not noted. We have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash dev dash zero five four entitled easement agreement over part parcel five one zero three C S T be received. And that staff be directed to prepare and present a bylaw to council to authorize the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to enter into an easement agreement with the owners of part five one zero three C S T, including language to repeal by law eighty three dash sixty one.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point eight, aerial fire truck replacement. Robidere Fire Chief.
Thank you worship through you to council. This report outlines what the approximate cost of an area is going to be. And it's got four, six, and eight-year lease shops, lease options as well. And it also mentions that pretty much any truck we're going to get isn't going to fit in the hall, so we're going to have to make adjustments to the door and that's going to be approximately thirty thousand.
Counselor White. Or Counselor Owen, sorry.
Rick, you're on mute again.
I guess that's what I get for laughing at politicians on TV and experts on TV that do the same thing. So it's just the door that would need adjusted and, and lengthwise and structurally the hall would be able to house a ladder truck?
Yeah, there's no issue with the length of the truck or the structure of the hall, it's just the door for it to go through.
Okay, and the one in the picture appears to me to have seating for about I would say seven firefighters. Are there and I believe the most I think we only have what, three firefighters, professional firefighters on duty with each platoon? Are there ladder trucks that would be less expensive with smaller cab on them?
Even the trucks with the smaller cabs, that's just there as an example of, of what an aerial
No, I realize that.
Even, even ones with seating for four or less than the one pictured, you're still looking at the same price.
Okay, and would the fire department be putting out a request for quotation to so there be it wouldn't be a sole sourced purchase?
Yeah, that's correct. Once I receive direction on whether or not to proceed, I believe that would be the, the very next step.
Okay, thank you, because when I first read this, I, I got a little nervous about spending that much money on a sole source sourced fire truck, so thank you very much, chief, for clarifying those, those things.
You're welcome.
Any further comments? Not noted. You have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash fire dash zero zero three entitled aerial fire truck replacement be received. And that staff be directed to proceed with the purchasing process for the replacement of the nineteen eighty eight Pierce aerial.
All in favor? Motion carried. Six point nine. Master plan, master fire plan update. Chief Robidere.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council, this report just outlines the issues that have been addressed from the master fire plan and some of the items that are still in progress. I'm just wondering if anybody has any questions from the report.
Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, I do have a question about, I, I know that I had asked this question about the Chappy Village and I just wonder if that's on your radar because I know there's a lot of concern from the residents that live in that area. And I, I don't know what can be done, I just know that somebody has to at least look at it, so we have some sort of an idea of how much potential liability and that we, that we currently have about that area.
Yes, I've already directed staff, we're doing a pre-plan for that area.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, I'm just anxious to hear what's, what's happening out in that, that particular area. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah. Fire chief, do we, this master plan, would that include K L Gold shaft number four, or this is just for town, they will have their own, I suppose. So what do you, what are your thoughts on that? Does that stretch over to Kirkland Gold?
I'm not sure I understand the question exactly.
Well, what I mean is that we have a fire plan for the town. And if they're firing, say, a K L Gold, one of the mines around, what they do all around there in the town. So that master plan covers them too? Or they have their own?
You mean like if the mine got fired, would we be responding?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we would definitely respond.
Oh, I see, okay.
Counselor White.
Sorry, Counselor Shaba, the fire master plan that we're referring to was actually a report that came from a consultant to, to the council just prior to us. So, so this report was based on that consultation. It's available on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Owen.
Rick, you begin, sir.
Yes, there we go. Sorry, it's good to see the progress is being made on this plan. I know prior to me being on council, when I was a reporter, I used to see all these consultant reports come forward and it seemed like a lot of them weren't acted on and I think the reason this question was asked was so that we could show the public that, yes, that, that fire master plan that was developed is not just sitting on a shelf gathering dust that the fire department is, is working on it. So thanks for the report, chief.
You're welcome.
We have a motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash fire dash zero zero four entitled master fire plan update be received and that staff be directed to continue implementing the recommendations from the master fire plan.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point one zero, connecting link application, Jim Roman, Director of Public Works. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. It's that time of year again where we're applying for our MTO connecting link funding. Just to bring everyone up to speed on what a connecting link is, it's, it's when a municipal running, running through a town connects two ends of a provincial highway. The province designates it as connecting link, it becomes eligible for ninety percent funding for capital improvements. So it remains a municipal road under, under the town's control, the MTO will pay the bulk of rebuilding it. Once again, applying to resurface the section of government road from Burnside Drive up to the college entrance and in, included with this is a proposed pedestrian crosswalk at Burnside Drive. Now, we've been unsuccessful for the last three years, applying for this, the funding for this particular section. But this summer, we had a delegation at the, at the AMO conference with, with Minister of Transportation. And subsequent meeting with, with MTO staff and we sort of pointed out the, the safety concerns with this road section. The, the, the substandard lane width traveling west in, in the the potential for an incident with, with pedestrians crossing at Burnside. So they were quite receptive to our our concerns and, and I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to see the, the funding this, this year around. The total project cost is one one million two hundred ninety thousand dollars, of which the MTO would pay ninety percent. We're posing a two-year project where next year we would get the detailed design work done with construction proposed for twenty twenty three. One other thing I'd like to bring to council's attention is that in order to accommodate the pedestrian crossing, we would need to place about a hundred meters of sidewalk along Burnside Drive. That's something that's not subsidized by the MTO, it's not being included in this application. And bringing that to council as proposed work for next year during budget deliberations. I would need a resolution from council in support of the application. And can answer any questions.
Counselor White.
Jim, I actually want to commend you on, on figuring out another way to go about getting the connecting link funding. We've been so unsuccessful in the past, so excellent job. And I do want to make note that at one time we did have a youth council committee going unfortunately due to COVID and Zoom meetings, that committee had closed. But at one time, this was the project that they were looking forward to reporting a report to council recommending better safety and better lighting at that intersection off of Burnside, as many kids have to cross for, not only for work, but to go to the complex as well. That was one of their greatest concerns, so I will have to pass along to the original members of the youth committee that their efforts weren't in vain and Jim had their back all along, so great job. Thanks.
Any other comments? Not noted, we have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved, report number twenty twenty one dash P W dash zero one three entitled connecting link application twenty twenty two to twenty three be received. That council support That council supports the application to the MTO connecting links program for the resurfacing of Government Road East. Sorry, Highway sixty six from Burnside Drive to the eastern limit of the connecting link agreement at Northern College, and agrees that the application is complete, accurate, and meets the requirements of MTO's connecting links program as described in the program guide. Sufficient capital funding is available for the municipal contribution component. And if the application is successful, the municipality will proceed with the project in accordance with the timeline specified in the application.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point one one. Options for winter operation of Rosa Brown Dog Park. Jim Roman, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. Okay, the Rosa Dog, Rosa Brown Dog Park was originally built, thanks to the efforts and potential contributions of numerous residents and businesses. The intent was for it to be a fenced-in area to provide residence, a place to bring your dogs to run run free and to socialize with their other dogs at at no charge to to the people utilizing the park. At present, it's it's open for three seasons of the year, and we provide garbage pickup. We connect and disconnect water and the shade sales. And we perform as well. Now, a request was made at the last council meeting to operate the park year round. In two thousand and seventeen, the the town responded to similar requests. Park was posted as being unmaintained and to use at your own risk. What happened is the gates would freeze in place with the the snow accumulation, people would force force them, and we'd we'd end up with with additional costs to repair these these gates. Two years, the town resumed locking the gates for the winter. So when we were asked to consider operating it through the winter, I I asked my my staff to come up with it with a cost. It it's estimated it would cost eleven thousand two hundred dollars to operate through the winter. In my report, I said it costs the town an additional eleven thousand two hundred, that's that's sort of leading this, this is staff time that and other, you know, elsewhere, but you could look at it as the the cost to the taxpayer of a thousand two hundred dollars. There would also be additional costs to repair the damage that took place over the winter and for additional maintenance in the spring. Because the snow clearing operations there, it it certainly wouldn't take top billing. And so there there could easily be times when people will be getting to the park before we've had a chance to to do still so. One of the suggestions was to operate the park as a as an operating authority. But again, this this would re originally proposed at the time the park built, and it was rejected by by the park volunteers. This takes a a user group to get together, form a form a legal entity that they need to to run the park. They'd have to fundraise to pay for operations, maintenance, and insurance. And that, in all likelihood, would lead to a fee being charged to use the park, which kind of goes against the original vision of available to everyone at no cost. Another option that could be considered is to go back to the use at on risk option. But again, that would lead to the the same problems we encountered before with additional maintenance costs. So we're actually recommending that the park remain a three-season park. And as as a footnote, we're reminding the public that they could always take their dogs on the on the winter trails behind the complex. Dog owners are welcome to ski, snowshoe, or walk with their dogs before eleven AM or after three PM. If there's any questions.
Counselor White.
Has any staff member reached out to the individual that spoke on the behalf of of wanting it to be open all seasons, to see if she herself would spearhead the possibility of an operating authority? I know what was suggested a few years ago, however, maybe today's volunteers would have more, today's users would have more interest in volunteering to create an operating authority?
Did not contact them with with that option. I I I felt that if if there was interest, they would come forward.
Any other comments? Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, I I agree with Director, I I agree with you, Jim, because we very much a challenge, not only to clear snow there, but also I believe to get in the water from the fire hydrants, locate it in the dog park, so and then that there won't be supply of water in the wintertime, I and of those pipes freezing anyways, you have to leave them on, so I I maybe the people who look at this, maybe like Counselor White said, we look at operating authority, because we have a lot of roads to be plowed in town, and we don't really want to divert any of those resources to the dog park. I mean, they won't be on top of the list, you know, there's no blizzard anyways, so I'm in support of this motion.
Counselor White.
I was just wondering if we could defer the decision until next council meeting, perhaps the members of the public seeing that this is up for discussion tonight will actually come forward if they so choose. And it's not something that has to be decided tonight. It's not that pressing because that we're in hopefully no danger of being buried under snow in the next two weeks, hopefully. So is it possible that we could possibly defer the decision on this until two weeks from now, just to give members of the public the opportunity to reach out if they so desire?
Do we have any objection from council?
I don't, I don't find.
Counselor Ivanov.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that maybe we should let them do this next year, setting up an operating authority, doing all the things that have to be done in order to have that park run by an operating authority, won't be happening before the winter sets in here. Passing this for this evening, but at least put this to bed for this year. And if there's some interest in operating authority, you know, they have all well, our winter eight or nine months to work on a plan. I'm kidding, by May or something, if they come up with something, they could probably get something that might work. Giving them two weeks is certainly not going to be enough that anybody could set up something that would be sensible.
No further comments? We have a motion.
So I do have it moved by Rick Owen and seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. I just want to confirm, are we moving forward with the proposed motion?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash PW dash zero one five, entitled options for winter operation of Rosa Brown Dog Park be received, and that the Rosa Brown Dog Park remain a three-season park.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point one two, connection to Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua Contract Amendment, Roman Director of Public Works.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. This this item is a bit of a housekeeping item, but at the same time, it requires councils understanding as well as approval. At the October nineteenth meeting, council agreed to extend the contract with Aqua for an additional two years. It was explained at that time that the price for twenty twenty two was based on an inflation, a two percent inflation of the current price with the cost of the chemicals removed and an adjustment made to reflect Aqua's increase in their insurance premiums. Unfortunately, clerical error resulted in improper amount placed in the actual agreement. We received a letter from Aqua explaining the error. And I can acknowledge that the price that what it was in the air, that it was the current price that was put into the agreement and not the proposed twenty twenty two price. This turns out to be an increase over this year's cost of just under fifteen thousand dollars, which is not unreasonable for a contract of this size. And just as a side note, by inflating it to send the the towns actually got a bit of a bargain in that the September twenty twenty one Consumer Price Index was announced at four point four percent. So as I said, it it's unfortunate, it it worked, but it was a clerical error, and I can verify that the price posed now is is the price that should have been included in the agreement last time.
Any, does anyone have questions? None noted. We have a motion.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash PW dash zero one four, entitled correction to Ontario Clean Water Agency Contract Amendment be received, and that staff be directed to present a bylaw to amend by law twenty one dash oh eight six, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor clerk to execute an amending agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency for operations and maintenance services.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. By consideration of notices of motion. Not noted. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Eight point one.
Okay, we have a few bylaws here this evening. First one moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero nine eight, being a bylaw to execute land sale agreement of three McKelvey.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero nine nine, being a bylaw to execute land sale agreement of part one, five, four, R, six, two, two, one.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one hundred, being a bylaw to execute land sale agreement of part two, five, four, R, six, two, two, one.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one oh one, be a bylaw to execute land sale agreement of part three, five, four, R, six, two, two, one.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero one, sorry, one zero two, being a bylaw to execute land sale agreement of part four, five, four, R, six, two, two, one.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one oh three, being a bylaw to appoint an auditor.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one zero four, being a bylaw to amend by law twenty one oh eight six, being a bylaw to amend an agreement with Aqua.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one zero five, being a bylaw to execute an easement agreement with David and Susan Brown over part one, five, four, R, six, one, seven, nine.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. None noted. Nine point one.
Sorry, your worship, there's two
Sorry.
listed in the attachment from questions from.
Oh, yes, sorry, nine point one. Would we read the question?
Yeah, is this? Is this, do you want me to read the question, or? Do you want me to read the question now? Am I, am I on?
So the attachment on the agenda, the first question is from Counselor White, and there is a staff response, and then the second question is from Counselor Shaba with a staff response. So Counselor White's question, and depending on the response to it, if there's staff that wants to elaborate, we'll let you take it from there.
Would you like me to read the staff responses? Is that what's happening here?
I don't know what's happening.
I don't, honestly, because it was just one-off, and the answer is in the printout, I didn't think there was discussion. You were pretty clear with your response, and and it is available to the public, so so I didn't know if there needs to be a real discussion on it. There there's not going to be a motion coming forward about it. It was just an update on the status of them, so I don't know.
Okay. Item. Do we have a motion to receive the questions from council to staff?
Yes, just depends on for Counselor Shaba's, if he had any additional discussion on his question or from staff, but if all is good.
No, 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 it's not at all.
Okay, so moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba, be resolved that the questions from council to staff be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Notices of motion, item number ten. None noted. Number eleven, counselors' reports. Counselor Owen.
Yeah, thank you, worship. It's been my tradition since I was knee-high to a grasshopper, with the exception of last year, which I was unable to attend due to COVID restrictions. I attended the Remembrance Day Service. I want to thank the Legion for once again hosting that very, it's a very For once again hosting that uh very, it's a very important service to me, um. Uh, my father was a World War uh. Two veteran and was sick mo- all of his adult life as a result of his service. And my only uncle died during World War Two. So it's a very uh. Sort of spiritual day for me and I I really appreciate the effort that the uh. Legion puts forward in in hosting that service every year. I wanna thank your worship for laying a reef on behalf of the uh town. I think it's important that as. As leaders in the community that we continue to recognize uh. Past and present service uh. Of our service people that allow us. To meet at this council table today, to have free uh. Democratic uh elections and and so many other things that we enjoy in our society that. We wouldn't be if if people hadn't have made sacrifices on our behalf. So, uh, the second half of my report. Is um. About town staff stepping up and above uh their normal duties, uh. I know when we had the boil water order, um, we thank uh a number of our staff for stepping up and above. Um, but I think um, one group that may have been missed was the roads department. Uh, they left their normal duties, um. Their day to day. Duties to distribute uh the notices uh to all the residents of of Kirkland Lake and I. I didn't go back and look on the YouTube uh to see, but. Apparently, um, they were missed in in the thank yous and I I I think it's important because it's an example of how our staff. Um. Go above and beyond when they have to, when it's in the in the best interest of the rape bear, so I. I personally just wanna thank the guys in the road staff for doing that and uh. We certainly didn't mean uh to leave them out in the first place, but. Thanks, guys, you did a great job for the residents. That's it.
Thank you, councillor White. Nothing else noted, we have a motion to receive.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item twelve point one. Uh, response from M and R on the bear trapping request. Councillor Owen.
Um, I brought this issue to council and and I must say that. I'm not surprised by the M and R response, although I am disappointed. And I just wanna point out that. There is no bar- there is a barbecue in my house, in my yard that's never been used. And it's not usable because I lost some of the parts when I was putting it together. So there's no barbecue in my yard, there's no bird feeders in my yard. And I use a ratchet strap. On my garbage can, so the bears can't get in it, but despite all these precautions. I still had bears going through my property. Or in. In front of my neighbor's property on a pretty regular basis. And. My two-year-old grandson. We have a big black dog that lives with us here. And to my two-year-old grandson. I don't think he could differentiate between a a young bear and a dog. And uh. You know what? To me, human life is 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 the most valuable. Um. Hopefully, uh. Somehow, some way. Um. The M and R will find. A way to change their their policies and and. And not just protect animals, but also protect humans who live in residential areas, not in the bush. And it's particularly disturbing to me because I have a cottage in Sesakinnica that's in the bush. Whether it's an active barbecue and whether there are bird feeders and in five years, I've only seen one bear on the property and it was running through the property going somewhere else, so. Um. Like I say, I'm I'm not surprised by the M and R's response, but I am disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the bear trapping correspondence from M and R be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Twelve point two, request for letter of support from the multicultural group. Uh, councillor, uh, sorry, Wilford has.
Thank you through you, your worship. This came in very late, um, and didn't make it on onto the agenda property. Uh, our apologies for that. The group is applying for funding under provincial program called the Anti-Racism Anti-Hate Grant. Uh, program, it focuses on supporting community-led initiatives. That will increase public education awareness of the impact of racism and hate in all its many forms. Uh, as part of the application process, they do ask for a letter of support from the community. I'd like to put one together for them. Uh, it would basically just say that uh it is a worthy cause from which the community as a whole will uh benefit. And that we support the group in its endeavors.
Okay.
That's all right. That's it.
Okay. We have a motion to. Provide that.
I've just put together a draft motion here, um, Wolf, if you can let me know if you think this will satisfy uh what they need. I have be it resolved that staff be directed to prepare a letter of support on behalf of the council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake.
Perfect.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion to go in camera.
Um, yes, we do. One moment here, I'll say moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty nine two. To discuss one matter regarding I, information supplied in confidence to the municipality and K. A position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality. And one item regarding D, labor relations.
All in. All in favor? Motion carried. We'll take a two-minute bio break. Matters arriving from the closed session.
A motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that in the absence of a CAO, council delegates the authority to bind the corporation. Effective department to the head of said department. When complex matters arise that require a vote by senior management. The voting members will be the Director of Community Services, Director of Corporate Services, Director of Public Works. Director of Economic Development, Executive Director and Fire Chief. The clerk will be the point of contact for communication for members of council to staff.
All in favor? Motion carried. Confirmation by law?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash one zero six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
All in favor? Motion carried. A motion to adjourn.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that council adjourn the November sixteenth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.